I'll order the July 8, 2024 special meeting of Carmel by the Sea City Council. Nova, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Darmoff?
Here.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Here.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Yeah.
All are present.
Very good. All right, before we go any further, we're going to get the rules of what we're doing here on public comment. Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Under the Brown Act, public comment for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item, and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending this meeting remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements of the Brown Act, then that speaker will be muted.
Thank you. That noted, was there anybody that'd like to speak tonight in the room? In the room? Oh, was there anybody online? Oops, sorry, Nancy.
I have to do my usual, this is Nancy Toomey, have to do my usual usurping of Chip's normal comment, which is to thank the city very much and all of the people who participated in the July 4 event. It was phenomenal, standing room only. Even the man upstairs supported us with great weather, or person upstairs, as the case may be. But just wanted to thank everybody. It was a phenomenal event. There's great pictures up on social media on that. And thank you, thank you, thank you, to everybody.
Thank you, Nancy, appreciate it. Does anybody else wish to speak tonight? Nova, is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes. Carol Hall, go ahead.
Carol, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I am. Yes, I was disappointed to see that we are continuing to have so many issues before us in such a compact fashion, to the point where we have four meetings this week with very critical issues to discuss at each one of those meetings. It's very hard for any of us to have a life other than that of the city, and I'm sure you can relate to that. Whoever's in charge of all this, I think I would recommend that they stop drinking so much caffeine. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else wishing to speak today? Let's see, you want to close the public comment period, bring it back, go to the consent calendar. Six items on the consent calendar today. Is there anybody in the council wishing to pull an item?
I'd like to pull four, five, and six, please.
Four, five, and six, for discussion?
Yes.
All right. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody in the public wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar? All right, we'll bring it back.
I'll make the motion, shall we move? Items one, two, and three?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? Nova, can we get a roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, let's go to item number four, which is resolution describing, designating Dave Potter as a voting member. Delegate Bobby Richards is the alternate voting member of the 24, 24 annual League of California City. Alessandra?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to request if we could get a report back from you after this meeting, because there are so many things that the city finds itself, the subject of these one-size-fits-all mandates and the loss of local control, that hopefully you can help fight for some of those issues when you go to one of these meetings and team up with some other cities. And if you could maybe provide us a report back on any success you have in that. Thank you.
Glad to. Okay, let's move on to item number five.
Oh, do we have a vote on that one?
I'm going to move them all together.
Oh, okay.
Alessandra, number five?
Oh, on number five, I'm just a bit concerned on this one that it feels like there's been a lack of openness and transparency on it. This definitely seems like something that we need much more community involvement and discussion of. So I would rather us not vote for it now and just maybe put it on a future agenda item where we can have the public have more of a say, because it really will have an impact, especially considering it's a Saturday, we've got traffic issues. We could potentially discuss doing it on a different street rather than the current site. I think there's just a lot that the public would like to get involved with and be able to participate before we just do something like that on consent agenda.
All right, is there anybody else in council wishing to talk to the side right now before I open up the public? Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to the side? Yes, come on forward.
Who's about the farmer market?
Yes.
Yeah. What a surprise, I just jumped out there with recommendation from staff for lord knows what reason. Two months, you had a survey going, apparently you got 38 respondents. I got told twice that in four days. I can't find one person who is on board with it. I also talked to all the employees at my bank today who have a huge issue with the Thursday market, with people parking there while they go to the market. Their customers, I'm one of those customers, can't even get a parking spot at the bank. And when they call the police, by the time the police get there, they've gone their merry way. But the customer has gone to run another errand, and their game is screwed up because of it. We're a small town, what do we need two farmers markets for? And on the busiest day of the week, staff, what you're part of, recommends this? For what purpose? And you get some letters of recommendation from people who are participating in it? Sure you did. Let's get, let's get some community involvement, like Alessandra said, and let's find out how many business owners really want that? How many people really will respond to this survey that you're so transparent? Did anybody know about it? Nobody knew about it. I talked to Bobby, he didn't know about it four days ago. So come on, you're going to be transparent? Then be transparent. It's ridiculous.
Let the record note that it was Parker Logan speaking, I believe. All right, is there anybody else wishing to speak?
I have to kind of agree with Parker in this case. I just found out about this about two and a half hours ago when another merchant called me and told me about it. I knew nothing about it. My, one of my problems is we're going to have a farmer's market two days back, you know, one day in between. They're selling fresh vegetables. They should still be fine two days later. And if these are for the residents, the residents are more out during the week, not as much on the weekend. We need our merchants to be able to have our customers coming in and finding spots to park. Sure, it's probably only 20 spots, but they, the merchants, the people at the farmer's market are taking up spots also. So I really have to agree that I think we need to have some more community outreach on this. Like I said, I just found out about this two hours ago. And there's, I haven't talked to anybody yet that's happy with it. So I'd hope that we could postpone it.
Just for the record, your name is?
Oh, it's Todd Tice.
That I knew, thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Dave.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, I don't see anybody. Close the public, is there anybody on there?
Oh, they put their hand down.
I didn't see that. All right, bring it back to council, enter direction, council members.
I'd like to move that we move this to a future council meeting and then have it with an open discussion with the public and just have more time for people to be able to know that this is coming up and just be able to be aware of it and chime in on what they think, if it's good or bad.
Is there any other discussion?
No, I would support that. And it's not that I'm against a farmer's market on Saturday, because I do think the farmer's market really does, is in line with, you know, our motto or goal of supporting residential community. I think the farmer's market is an important part of the residential community. However, I don't feel like there was enough information out there for it. And so I would like to see us move this maybe to a later date and have a little bit more discussion on it. And it's not that I'm against it or for it, it's where I just need more information, because I did talk to some business owners, I did talk to some people that enjoy the farmer's market. For me, it does feel more like a residential opportunity for our people to come out that do work during the week, that want to have a farmer's market. I do like the idea that it's produce-only or produce-focused, and it's earlier in the morning, which would probably affect our businesses a little bit less than if it was in the afternoon. So I would just like to discuss this more and move it along, move it to another date.
You have a motion and second, is there any other discussion?
I guess I will opine here for just a moment. You know, when the farmer's market that is so successful now, when it was first proposed, there were horror stories about how it was going to ruin business downtown and so on and so forth. And it's turned out to be a really wonderful community event. I see more people during the farmer's market than I see at the post office or anywhere else, actually, these days. And I think it's a very worthy thing. This was a bit of a surprise at the last notice. So maybe with a little bit more discussion, because it is a smaller footprint, it is a smaller amount of vendors, it is not food competition as far as prepared food. So maybe a little bit more discussion will help that go to acceptance at some point.
All right, any other discussion?
I had a question, Mayor. Was the motion to continue it to the next meeting or to a date uncertain?
Date uncertain, I think.
Date uncertain would be fine, but definitely have it as a order of business where the public can participate.
Well, you can come forward under public comment. I'll open up the public comment period again.
Sorry about that, I'm Joe Ockert, I own Kakis with my wife Connie. We've been in business about 30 years. I'm in the Carmel Plaza on the corner. And the only thing I can say is that the amount of money that goes into these stores is tremendous. And I've seen a lot of people in the last couple of years slide since COVID. And they need all the help they can get. And the farmer's market for us just creates a parking problem. So we already have one. So you have the freight trucks, and then you have the produce trucks, and we can deal with that. When you put the people from out of town coming in, it's very hard to get around. So if you're down there like we are entirely, it's difficult. So I really can't believe we're talking about this again, but we already have one day where there's a farmer's market. And it's not that we're out of touch, it's that most of these small businesses have a personal guarantee on their lease. And when you start taking the parking away and the confusion, it's a problem. It's a real problem. And we're kind of at the heart of it. So the traffic down there stops, it sort of hurts the entire area. And the last thing I want to see is more empty spaces. You may not think it ties together, but I'm there all the time. Most people know that by now. It's a lot of money on the line. It's not fruits and vegetables. And I understand the community, I happen to live in it. So please understand, it's pretty serious. And as I said, most of these people have a personal guarantee. And a lot of people don't even really, they don't even understand what that is. So if they don't make it, they're in a lot of trouble with the landlord. And I think there has to be some kind of line. We're already, we already have a farmer's market. Do we need a second day in the middle of the summer? I don't know. It's very hard on the business right now, just because we have trucks right now that we have to, that are going to be around the plaza and around Carmel. And when I see the tourists driving around them and trying to dodge it, it's crazy. I mean, you got to be aware, if you stand down there long enough, you'll see exactly what I'm saying, because they come in at 6:00 in the morning or 7:00 in the morning, and they're taking employee parking. So that's just how it is. Sorry I'm late.
No problem, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, those that haven't tonight, okay, come forward. Let's not hesitate.
Hi, I'm Raul Lopez, and I'm the farmer's market manager. And I hope a lot of you don't despise me because of that. But you know, my team and I, we take great pride in representing the city and doing things here to make the city even more special than it already is. As far as parking, which I understand is one of the biggest concerns, and I think it's an important concern, and I, and I hear it and I understand it. I just want to emphasize that the vendors currently park at Vista Lobos and two blocks up from the market, past Fifth Street. Another thing I'd like to say is if you don't go to the farmer's market, you do see a lot of the community out there. You see a lot of, it's a very positive place. And I think that since it falls in the middle of a regular workday, a regular nine-to-five day, a lot of the community doesn't, you know, get to experience the farmer's market, and they miss out on the happy and community aspects that those on Thursdays do get to enjoy. I know that on Saturdays, I've heard comments from the public that they don't even come to town because town is so busy. So for them to have a reason to come to town and enjoy Carmel by the Sea on a Saturday, I think is, I think is fair to say. And with that, I say thank you, and it's, yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you, we all appreciate it. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Kristi Ramers, and I own Eco Carmel, which is just three blocks away from the farmer's market. And I just wanted to stand up and say I have the flip side, which is my business is really busy because of the farmer's market on Thursday mornings. And parking in my street is also not full at all until about 11:00. So all my local customers come in the morning. But I just wanted to put out there a positive spin on what the farmer's market has brought to my business.
Thank you. Looks like you'll all have a chance to participate in a lively discussion. So we have a motion, we have a second, is there any other, any other public input? I don't see anybody, okay. Nova?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and that brings aside number six.
Okay, I'm bringing this up, this is regarding the housing element from 2015 to 2023, so it's the fifth cycle, the previous one. But once again, it's such an important topic that I don't feel right when things like this are put on the consent agenda, because I think that the public needs to know more about what is on there. And then furthermore, I was hoping we could also get an update, for example, on the ADU ordinance and the status of that. And it's just, there's so much, and I hope certainly for the next time around, we don't do an update on the housing element in a consent agenda item, because it's just so important, and the public wants to know what's happening.
Is there anybody else in council wishing to speak on this item? Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item? Let's see, we'll bring it back to council. Brandon, do you want to speak?
I was going to make a motion to approve items four and six.
Second?
I'll second.
If you want to go ahead and speak.
Just the request about the ADU ordinance, certainly something we can, we can bring back a short update at the next council meeting. That's a very fair request.
Thank you.
We'll bring something back, thank you.
Right, well, we have motion and a second to go ahead and approve items number four and six. Any other discussion?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're through with the consent calendar. That brings us on to the orders of business. One, item number seven is authorizing the city administrator to execute amendment number one to the professional service agreement for Forleaf Inc., the second amendment to PSA for Asonio, and both for project management services for fee increase of $150,000, now received $125,000. Physically, $24,000, $25,000 respectively.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Mary Bilsey. And so the process for the consultant started in 2022, and it was based on a selection process for project management services as well as other services. Forleaf and Asonio were selected to support the CIP projects as well as the facility renovation projects. In September, the council awarded a two-year contract to Forleaf and to support CIP projects. And in August, they awarded a three-year contract to Asonio to support the facility renovation projects. For Forleaf's scope of work, moving forward, the police building renovation will be the only project that is in the proposed amendment to this contract. Forleaf will, it will be based on an as-needed-on-call services for the police building project. And we realized in the last budget cycle that the council approved a budget for a new project manager. But this would be above and beyond what that project manager would be doing and kind of in the interim as well. So services would be provided by the consultant. It allows for flexibility to the city staff, because it's on-call-as-needed services, and it would extend through June of 2027. For Asonio's scope of work, they currently are in the process of four CIP projects. And they are overseeing construction management and inspection. And they also have an ongoing project for the Tressle Bridge project, the Park Branch Library project, the window repairs. And they provide project coordination, updates, they help us with the pre-bid meetings, they issue addendums, bid proposals, they provide a lot of different services. And I think it's spelled out fairly clearly in your staff report. If you need any more details about that, please let me know. And the fee for Forleaf for as-needed services for the police building project solely is $150,000. And the fee for Asonio for project management services for the various CIP projects is $125,000. So that concludes my staff presentation.
Thank you, Mary, appreciate it. Is there any questions by council members? We're open up the public. Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to the side?
Thanks. I just want to say, I was looking at a recent document I received from the city about consultant fees. And it looks like you spend, you know, well over a million dollars a year on consultants. And there's lots of other things we could be doing, like fixing the beach stairs or the tree stump, the one that fell on my truck last year that has a note that says, "Stump will be removed within 30 days." And that was like dated in February. So we're just throwing money around for things we know we need to do. We've been remodeling the police station for 12 years. We're just spending money to figure out how to do it. So, I don't know, let's fix the beach stairs and make our town beautiful and find the $250,000 you guys lost from all the parklet rent you collected that now Dale's doing the beautification of Carmel by the Sea instead of Carmel by the Sea. You guys are, you know, con men. Thank you.
Thank you, Parker. I believe that was Parker Logan again for the public. Thank you, anybody else wishing to speak today? I don't see anybody. Bring it back to council, council members.
I think maybe, maybe we should clarify consultant. Can you, can you help me with that, Brandon? The difference between, if you hire an architect to build a house, is he a consultant or is he an architect? If we hire somebody to do these services, are they consultants or are they actually producing work?
Well, I think both, both are true. So a consultant can be an architect. I mean, the reason that you, as a city, hire consultants is because they offer skills that you either don't have within the city, technical skills, like you said, architects, like an architect that does police buildings, you would hire outside, because we don't have that. We actually don't have architects in the city either. Or you hire to support the capacity that you don't have with services. So that's why we hire additional tree contractors. We do have those skills in-house, but the volume is more than what we have the ability to do. So you, being a contractor or being a consultant and being an architect aren't necessarily separate, but that's the reason why we use consultants is for capacity.
So they help achieve the job that we want to get done?
That's right. They're ultimately part to, your other question, they are ultimately part of a deliverable, yes.
Because we don't have staff, or we don't have people on staff that can handle these jobs, nor do we pay them CalPERS or the ongoing fees that it takes to have a staff member that is proficient in this sort of work. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair way to say it, is you wouldn't necessarily, it's certainly something that has, is done in bigger cities, but you wouldn't necessarily hire a full-time architect to bring on board with, you know, CalPERS retirement and everything like that for some discrete projects. You outsource those. Certainly, the cost of an architect is lower for a discrete project than it is for having them as a long-term, full-time employee with retirement benefits.
Thank you.
All right, with that clarification, council members?
I really am concerned that we are spending too much on these consultants, and we just hired a $200,000 employee to help with project management. So I would like to see the Public Works Department find a way to make this work without having to continue with these consultant fees for these, these two.
Well, I disagree, because I find that the consultants come in, they do their work, and then they're gone. We don't have to have them on staff forever, which ultimately does save us money. So I would like to move approval on this.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? I just commented I'm under the Root City Hall roof replacement, $20,000 to go ahead and oversee that. I mean, honestly, if they were remodeling my house and I had my roof redone, what would I need to do? Why would I need a consultant for that? No, no, it's not. It's one of the ones that falls under the consultant's fees. Here, CIP, item number two, Asonio. Roof replacement, $350,000 theoretically, but the fee is $20,000 to go ahead and monitor what would be normally part of a normal job. Mary, where'd you go? Understand my question?
I believe I did. It's the services that Asonio provided for us was we have to take everything to go out to bid, we have to prepare all the documents prior to that. So for public works projects, there's a whole process that we have to go through. And so that's what Asonio did for us, because it was technically under Bob Harari, and he wouldn't have had time to do that. So the consultants did all of the pre-work, and also through construction, they will be managing the project.
Okay, thank you. With that clarification, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Darmoff?
No.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries four, one.
All righty, moving on then to item number eight, which is again, I believe, Mary Bilsey. City administrator to execute a construction contract with California Constructors amount of 15%, contingency, $183,000, $310,000 for the City Hall roof replacement project?
So we, so we recently went through the process of bidding for the roof replacement project. We've been hearing about this item for a couple of years. The City Hall's roof was last replaced in 1984, and it's 15 years past its warranty. We have a professional service agreement with Asonio to manage this project. In 2023, in April, we received the planning department design approval. We went through the process, and we bundled this project with other CIP projects. And the bids came in too high, and city council had rejected the bids because it was over the amount that we had budgeted for it. So back in May of this year, the project was re-advertised, and five bid proposals came in. And the low bid was from California Constructors for the amount of $159,400, which was well below what we had budgeted. And so in June, we went back to the planning department with some options for the shingles, and the planning department recommended something called Landmark TL Shingles in Country Gray. We have an example of what those shingles are up here. And so as part of the project, the California Constructors are going to remove, recycle, and replace the copper gutters. They will replace the downspouts and the flashing with new galvanized sheet metal components. The gutter and the finish are going to match the existing roof components. And basically, for the timeline, it's supposed to be completed within four months. And City Hall will remain open during re-roofing. The contractor won't be permitted to work during any of the council meetings or commission meetings or any other public meetings. And the stage- And the staging area is going to be located in the south parking lot with ADA access still available. So the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the administrator to execute a contract with California Constructors in the amount with a 15% contingency of $183,310 for the City Hall roof replacement. The contingency is based on the building being a historic building, and so when you're replacing a roof, there's a lot of times different items come up, and so that's what the contingency amount is for. And we do have Dustin Connor from Asonio in the audience here, who's available to answer any technical questions if anything else comes up about this.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any questions to Mary by council?
I have one. Just to be sure, to clarify, this did you out to bid?
Yes.
And how many bids did we get?
We got five.
We got five bids for this, and they were all competitive bids from well-known companies, local companies. I assume they were local companies?
I think Dustin may be able to answer those specific questions if they were all local. I know the California Constructors are, is a, I believe they're based out of Escondido and San Diego, but they went in business with someone maybe out of Fresno, a subcontractor out of Fresno.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else? Is there anybody in the public who should speak to this item tonight? Somebody bring it back to council. I'd just comment that I think that, given the fact that the first bids came in, there were only two that came in, $600,000 and $300,000, approximately, to go ahead and have this come in at basically half the price, it's a good saving, so well done. Thank you, appreciate that. I'd be happy to move this item.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramov?
Yes.
Councilmember Furledo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All righty. The next item is Resolution 24-054, approving change order number four and number five to the city on-call tree service contractors, balance spending in the fiscal year 23, 24, to allocate tree contracts to fiscal 24, 25, to allocate funds to the city on-call landscape maintenance services contracts respectively.
Good afternoon, Mayor Potter, council, staff, public. My name is Tom Ford. I work in public works, and part of, one of the hats that I wear is that I work, I assist our Forestry Division with budgeting and contractual logistics, and there are three resolutions that I believe we would need to, that we're requesting to be voted on individually. The first is for, it is change order number four to our on-call tree services contracts, and this is actually a net sum, it's a sum of $0 increase to the 23, 24 fiscal year limit of $925,000. We just needed to balance the expected invoices, when we had written this report, to the numbers allocated to each of the three companies. So that is change order number four, so it's technically for last fiscal year. Change order number five is for the same three on-call tree service contractors for this new fiscal year 2024, 25. $1,197,000 was approved by council to be distributed among our three on-call tree service contractors. And in consultation with Justin Nono, our city forester, I do work closely with him, I work with other divisions, but I do work closely with him, and we had elected to propose an allocation of $333,000 to each of the three companies that we're in contract with that would leave $198,000, which would allow us a bit of flexibility. We know that we've spent a lot on storm-related recovery in the past two years. So we had decided to only allocate $999,000 of the on-call tree services contract budget for this upcoming fiscal year to be allocated evenly among the three companies. There is plenty of work to do. We're certainly well aware of the task ahead of us. We are excited to embark on that. Our residents are very excited for us to embark on that. A lot of the actual numbers that I think that folks are going to want to see are, they'll actually be in tomorrow's council presentation. All the exact amount of stumps that we had removed, trees that we had taken down, cleaned up, trees planted, all, lots of different numbers would be actually in the presentation for tomorrow. However, today's presentation is just requesting the allocation of these funds to be able to do a lot of our, what we term a catch-up. We believe it would be a three-year catch-up, so this is likely one-third of the, the amount of money approved for this fiscal year is likely one-third of what we anticipate it will cost for our complete catch-up, which would be removing all of the dead trees and very poor trees in town and the cost to replace them. So that covers the second resolution that we wanted to go over, which is change order number five. Switching gears just a bit, there is a third resolution that we would like consideration on, which is for our on-call landscape maintenance services contract. We have Town and Country under contract for $175,000, and council had approved $229,200 in the current 2024, 25 fiscal year. And this would be change order number one to this contract. Town and Country serves 23 locations throughout the city. There is a list of all 23 that I included towards the bottom of the staff report. And we, Brandon had alluded to this earlier, but we don't quite, with one landscaper, as a full-time employee, we just don't have the capacity to get to every location. So that's the reason why we rely on Town and Country, and we believe they've done a good job.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions to Mr. Ford by council members? Is there anybody in the public who should speak to this item? Anybody bring it back to council? Council members?
I would like to move approval of this. And I would also make a comment that I think Town and Country is doing a very good job throughout the community. It was great to see the medians mowed early this year instead of waiting so long. And I see them out working throughout the city and in Mission Trail and other places. So, as I said, I would move this along.
Do you want to second it?
Second.
Okay, we have a moment for me, we have a couple of seconds. Anybody else? Just a comment.
Is this for all three or one at a time?
All.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramov?
Yes.
Councilmember Furledo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, item number 10 is Resolution 24-057, approving an agreement between the City of Carmel by the Sea and Picasso Inc. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So in January of 2022, there was a grand deed recorded for a home, which transferred title to Dolores Seven Southwest of 13th LLC, a Delaware limited liability corporation, which I'll refer to here as the Dolores Home. Picasso Inc. has marketed the Dolores Home as a fractional interest sale of 1/8 shares, in which each share owner is entitled to occupy the Dolores Home for specific dates as agreed upon by the share owners to the exclusion of the other share owners. We submitted correspondence to Picasso in 2022, advising them that we believed that they were in violation of the city's code at that time. Picasso responded that they disagreed with our position, and they felt that the Dolores Home was not a timeshare. So the city amended its ordinance in March of 2023 with ordinance 2022-007, and that amended the city's municipal code relating to timeshares. In April of 2023, that ordinance was submitted to the California Coastal Commission, and in October of 2023, the Coastal Commission certified the Implementation Plan Amendment, finding that it conforms with and is adequate to carry out the provisions of the certified land use plan. So there is currently a good-fate dispute between the city and Picasso with respect to the ownership of the Dolores Home and whether it does violate the city's codes. And that in order to resolve this dispute between the city and Picasso, there is proposed for the council's consideration this evening, an agreement between the city and Picasso, which is attached to the resolution submitted with this staff report. Under the terms of the agreement, the Dolores Home will be deemed a legal non-conforming use, and which is sometimes referred to as grandfathering, in which the use that was permitted in the law in effect at the time becomes inconsistent with subsequent changes in the city's codes. The agreement also provides that Picasso will not, except for the Dolores Home, market, use, sell, or purchase any real property or portion thereof within the city that is fractionalized ownership, and will not assist others in the marketing, use, sale, or purchase of the fractional property, own property. So the recommended action is for the council to adopt the resolution that's in your agenda packet approving the agreement with Picasso, and I'm prepared to answer questions.
Are there any questions to council at this time before I take it off to the public? Is there anybody in the public who should speak to this item tonight? Last call. Anybody on Zoom?
There's no people.
All right. Okay, council members. Jeff?
Thank you. You know, I've had a, excuse me, I've had a significant amount of heartburn since I got the packet a couple of days ago. And I feel like, you know, at this point, I look at the things I think that make Carmel Carmel, you know, we've had this timeshare ordinance forever, and I appreciate that, you know, that we have revised the timeshare, we revised the timeshare ordinance in 2023 to strengthen it. But I'm not, you know, I see Bill Kadel in the audience, and I'm not, at this point, I'm not prepared to enter into this agreement. I know that, I know that, you know, my discussions with Brian, I know that this will prevent Picasso from coming into the city with new timeshares, but I believe that we already have that protection in place through the 2023 ordinance. And so, you know, we had a significant discussion a couple of years ago when we talked about the nature of Carmel and the cell phone towers. You know, what do we do as a community to protect the integrity of the things that we value here? And to me, the Picasso, you know, the situation with timeshares is worse, is more detrimental to the community than the cell phone towers. And I think that we should, you know, I think that I need to vote to, you know, if it comes to litigation on the basis of the old ordinance, then that's something I'm prepared to do. So I'm not in support of this resolution at this point.
All right, council members, anybody else?
Well, I would just like to say that Picasso doesn't play by the rules. They are constantly creating new ideas. And one of their new ideas is to assist people in forming LLCs and buying property. And I think that this agreement and our ordinance protects against that. If the city attorney might mention something about that that's in there.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, in paragraph six of the agreement, it specifically says that Picasso is not going to market, use, sell, or purchase any real property that is fractional ownership. And it also provides that they will not assist in any way other persons or entities in the market use, sale, or purchase of a fractional ownership. So that is included within the terms of the agreement.
And I brought that up because I think that's very important for us to understand because they are doing that in other communities. They are looking through real estate guides, Zillow, et cetera. They are finding homes that look attractive, and then they are offering to create LLCs for those. And I think this agreement, even though it may not be 100% acceptable to everyone, I think, in fact, it does help protect us from something like that. And that would not be a home divided into eight parts. That would be a home divided into how many parts you wanted to have as your partners, which could be just as disruptive as the one home that we have. So I would support this today.
All right, any other questions? Any comments? Sounds like a motion.
Well, I would like to chime in, though, because as Jeff, it does give you a heartburn when you have these sorts of decisions. They're tough. And it's one very much reminds me of maybe five or six years ago with the short-term rentals downtown. I felt back then, and I felt still feel today, we made the right decision to allow what we had as legal non-conforming, but disallow any others. I think it was the right decision then. I think that it paid off for us as far as we didn't allow any more to come in. There was no more added to the stock that we had already had, and we stopped it right then and there. And I think unfortunately for the town, we do have this, and especially for the neighbors. But in order for us to not have any more of this sort of thing come in, I think we have to approve this tonight.
All right, then, I'd move adoption of the ordinance.
Dave, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, I'd move adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Move a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I just want to add real quick. I wish we could have done more for the neighbors. I wish there was a way that we could make them not, you know, continue as what they're doing. And we basically faced a series of, you know, what is the least worst option in this case? And I think that's what we're doing right now. Brian, if you could also mention, the risk that we were concerned with is if we got into a legal challenge with them, what happened with some of the other cities, I think, was at St. Helena, and what happened with them with the lawsuits?
Well, there is a litigation risk, is what I think you're referring to, and there was litigation, it's a matter of public record, involving the city of St. Helena and Picasso. That was filed in April of 2021, and it was settled in January of 2024, two and a half years later after litigation. And the result in the St. Helena matter was a settlement agreement which, under which the city agreed to recognize the four Picasso homes as legal non-conforming uses. And in exchange for that, that Picasso agreed not to purchase any more homes in the city of St. Helena, so that's substantially similar to this agreement that's being proposed.
Right.
Brandon, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to assure Councilmember Dramov and the neighbors that, you know, just because the use of being a timeshare is grandfathered in, that site is still subject to all the city's codes and regulations with respect to noise and parking and all that stuff. So we, you know, if a neighbor has an issue, they can call us, and we'll act swiftly, as we always do on those things.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. We have a moment in a second. We have any other discussion? I don't see any.
Councilmember Barron?
Bill, someone in the audience wanted to make a comment.
It's a little late, but, okay, public comment.
My name is Bill Kadel, and I've been in front of you before, and I want to, excuse me, commend you all for initially dealing with this issue, and we're very familiar with it because we live right across the street. We realize this has been a real problem in St. Helena, Napa, and Tahoe, and the way in which you mannered and dealt with this, and the rapidity in which you did was very confirming to us. We have known people that have entered this home, and have met them and dialogued with them, and find them very nice and neighborly. We don't have any trouble with that. But we continue not to appreciate the concept. The concept is a bad concept for this community, and that's the only one I'll address. But the experience that we've had, there are shortcomings. We didn't choose to live across from a motel or a hotel, but I must say, they have put their people on point, and it's been okay. The worst part of it would be if it were to continue, in which we have rental properties around our street, and everybody lined up, and occasionally, there's only one car. Oftentimes, there's four. Sometimes, there's no dogs, sometimes, there's four. Sometimes there's no dogs, sometimes there's four. So you never know what you have. Communicating with them if something goes wrong, we were told to call the police. That would give you some business, I know. But anyway, it's a bit frustrating as neighbors to know not who your people are around you. And we see a lot of new pieces, faces, and who are they? We don't know. But again, we are just, my wife and I, okay with just this one grandfathering because I realize what could happen. Attorney, you could clarify that in a, in a, you know, a way which could go on and on, I know. And you have deep pockets here that, I don't know, maybe we do too, for all I know. But all I do is we're across the street, and it's okay now. I, my, our fear was to see this thing expanded as we saw both in St. Helena personally and in Tahoe personally, and it's a mess. So thank you again, commend you for all the work you've done.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate it. So anybody else who should speak? We'll close it, we'll go back to council. We have a motion in a second, knowing.
Councilmember Barron?
No.
Councilmember Jarmov? Yes. Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
All right, item number 11 is receive and review the request for proposal for architectural services for the Harrison Memorial Library, providing direction to staff. Ashley, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having me here to present to you this evening. We're here to talk about the request for proposals for architectural services for the Harrison Memorial Library and to provide me with direction. So a little bit about where we've been just this year. We, in, well, back up a little bit, in 2023, we completed a phase one master plan for the Harrison Memorial Library and the Park Branch that gave us an understanding of structure deficiencies, infrastructure deficiencies, that would need major upgrades at some point in the next 10 to 15 years. Public Works has done an excellent job taking care of our most critical needs with HVAC systems. We saw windows are on here, things that need to get done. So the library buildings overall have been well maintained and have lasted us well and served the public well. But we do have parts of our wiring that are over 100 years old in the Harrison building, so there's going to be some bigger things that come up. To that end, we have the phase one master plan now that gives us an understanding of potential costs and what we're looking at for those types of things. This year, the library board formed an ad hoc committee to look at the master plan itself and think about how we move any and all projects forward. They requested a presentation from myself and the public works director on this infrastructure and the critical need for those to be upgraded in the near future. Council also received this presentation from staff, and that was at its March 5 regular And we had a couple of these going through so that, to give the community an understanding of this, but both respective governing bodies, as the library board has oversight of our library facilities and makes recommendations on those needs to all of you. We received direction from the city council to conduct some workshops, to solicit some community input, to inform the drafting of a request for proposals to go out and look for an architect, in particular for the Harrison Library. As you all know, this is a historic building with five levels, which is challenging for accessibility. And it has lasted us for almost 100 years. 2028 will be our 100th birthday of being in that building, and we want to make sure it's preserved and that we're always meeting community needs for library services. We scheduled workshops for Thursday, May the 16th and Thursday, May the 23rd. Unfortunately, we did not have anybody attend the Thursday, May 16th, and that was canceled. We did have seven members of the public, in addition to representatives of the Board of Trustees and the Carmel Public Library Foundation Board, who participated in the March 20th, or May 23rd, community meeting. And the kinds of things we talked about at this community meeting were, you know, future of library services. What's working now? What do we need to change for now? But also, how does that inform how we're thinking about library services in the future? Which is a challenging question to answer, you know, for anything, really. One of the biggest themes of the workshop that we heard was that attendees did not want the library to change. Library users like the cozy traditional atmosphere with books, comfy seating, programs going on, and the hub role that the library plays in that community. Now, what does that tell us when we're talking about a renovation project? That tells us that, that tells us that, yeah, well, two things. One, the master plan tells us we have infrastructure things behind the walls that need to be fixed. The, the community meetings tell us that when we go in to do any sort of construction in the future potentially, that we want to be very, very, very careful about any changes that we make, especially in the Harrison building. So very deft and delicate touches as we go through. So that was helpful thing for us to hear. It wasn't a surprise to me at all, based on working on the actual desk myself from time to time at the Harrison building. Every time we shift anything a little bit, we hear about it. So it just reinforces and underlines, again, any changes that we do make need to be carefully thought out. And I will underline this and put it in all caps and exclamation points on both sides of it, as we hopefully move forward in this process. Community input is critical. So right now, we're at these very beginning baby stages, baby steps, but with an architect on board, we will dive into very similar process that the police department is going through right now with community input for design. Again, more, I want to hear lots more about future of libraries and, and where we go as we move forward on this project. So, the request for proposals is attached to your staff report. As I was drafting this, request for proposals, and reading other cities' requests for proposals for their library renovation projects, thinking about the community workshop, thinking about other times we'd had studies done on our library and what we learned from those processes, these are the four kinds of things that ended up guiding me as I went along. One, the, and this is important for our, our project to be successful and important for any architect to understand from the get-go, which is, community input and support of the project is critical. And we will be bringing the public along as we go through this at every step of the way. This is a historic building. This is one of our historic city facilities. It's on Ocean Avenue. It is a gem here in our town. And making sure that it's preserved well into the future, again, is, will be a factor for success. Making sure those critical infrastructures are upgraded. And that includes, when I talk about that, any ADA improvements we can make as we go along. It's a five-level building. The bathrooms are inaccessible, they're in the basement. So if there's opportunities, again, balancing that out with not wanting to change that we can make, there's going to be some really good discussions that we have as a community about what those changes might look at, like in the future. And then, of course, library innovation. So is it all computers, and we just have two compact discs that you check out for all the world's knowledge? Probably not. Books have never gone away, they're never going away. But what kinds of programs can we do? You know, we, our neighbor Pacific Grove is checking out kitchen equipment. Is there a way for us to carve out a space or think differently and innovate those spaces so that we can better accommodate library of things? So that's the kind of thing we'd be looking for as we go forward. And I'm not going to, you know, read the entire RFP to you. Again, we just went through these things about, you know, we're going to need an architectural firm who understands how important those four concepts are. This hopefully is captured throughout the request for proposals, most heavily in the introduction and the description of our city, so the place that we live, its cultural landscape, our expectations, our honor for our history alongside, you know, the history of the library itself, and what we are looking for specifically from an architect. For this architect, what we would be looking for is, of course, project management, design development, conceptual design refinement, submittal of big bid packages and bid services, and construction services. And this would be typical of a project of this type, to be looking for all of these things from an architect. I did also include a tentative RFP timeline in here. This is a, an aggressive timeline to keep this project moving forward, again, so that we can get an architect in place and really as a community, start to dig in to the meat of this project, and start having these conversations so that we have the architect that we feel will be able to guide us through this, there, present, participating with the community, listening to all of you and your thoughts about library services into the future. Again, the RFP also does have boilerplate language and standard language that isn't, you know, quite as, as fun and flowery, but that's necessary as part of this process. But hopefully I managed to, to touch on those things. And I'm available to answer any questions. My hope today is that you will provide me with directions for any edits, or if I missed anything, the Board of Trustees did review this and provide me with some edits. And then to direct me to send the request for proposals out to the architect community. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions from the council or members of the.
Any other questions, council members?
Yes, Ashley, thank you for the presentation. I think this is something most people in our community are looking forward to in the coming months. Because we have two separate buildings, but we have three separate libraries in those two separate buildings, is this RFP going to cover all of those, or are you just speaking of Harrison Memorial right now when you speak of the historical?
We're just speaking of the historical building. And I will say, no, there's been questions today about consultants and things like that. Part of the, the slow working on this has been working with the Carmel Public Library Foundation, who are proposing to raise funds for this project. And I think that's, that's a big deal for the city for a project of this nature. So it would just be the Harrison building to start with. There were in the phase one, some program switches. So you mentioned three libraries, and, and for those of you who don't know what council member Ferlito is referring to, that is, the Harrison Memorial Library, and then within the Park Branch, we have the local history department, which is our archives and our history of our city, but also the children's department. So we have three very important things going on with our libraries. For our infrastructure report, they did propose flipping the local history department to the Harrison, but that is open and will be part of a bigger, larger discussion with the community with regards to, they call them program, program switches, where you have departments within, you know, our department.
But those program switches would influence the architectural renovation, depending on how that goes?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about, you know, and you just brought it up, program switches.
Mm-hmm.
You know, during the, during the presentation you gave, there's a lot of talk about sort of trying to figure out what a modern library is. And, you know, we've been going through that discussion with, on the police station project, you know, what, what are the, what's the functions that a police station is supposed to provide? And we hired, you know, the council hired, you know, a year ago, you know, Indigo, Indigo, this firm that specialized in police stations, and they have helped us answer the question of what goes into a police station. And when I, you know, we have an architect on staff, right? Not, not on staff, but we have hired.
On contract, yes.
We have hired Jason Architects, and so they sort of did a lot of the work with respect to the, the library master plan that you talked about, and that in this RFP, in this staff report, you talked about revising it, revising the RFP and whatever. And so, one of the things, one of the things I noticed is that in the scope of services that you, in the third slide from the end, in the scope of services, there's no notion in the scope of services of addressing the library master plan. And in fact, the, in the RFP, in the RFP, there's no, you know, on the decision criteria at the end, there's no experience with libraries required. And so I'm, I'm trying to figure out where, you know, if the library process, if the process of defining what a library is, isn't quite finished, I'm trying to figure out how the person that you hire with this RFP is going to help that process if that person doesn't have library experience. And I'm, I'm struggling with that, and I'm hoping you can help me.
Yes, I can, I can address that. So depending on the architect, it can go, it can go either way. So you can have, like, somebody like Jason Architects that specializes in libraries. And for instance, let's say it's an underwater library. So we bring in, they bring in a subconsultant that specializes in, you know, waterproof books and works with staff on that. Conversely, we can work with somebody, in, in the case of Harrison Memorial Library with the five levels, and with it being a historic building, that is really, really important for somebody to have experience with. They can bring on, there's plenty of, and I know that consultant isn't a good word, but subconsultants that work with the architect, work with staff, to provide that level of expertise about library services. There's never going to be an architect that has everything that we need in their brain and their firm, and, but we do have that amount of flexibility. Does that answer your question, council member?
Yes.
Any other questions? Ashley, is anybody from the board here?
My board president, John Krieger, is here in the audience, yes. And then I do have, there are representatives from the Carmel Public Library Foundation, our executive director, Alexandra Fallon, and the Carmel Public Library Foundation Board President, Marcy Mo.
If they have a desire to speak.
John?
Yes?
John? My name is John Kreischer, I'm the president of the Harrison Memorial Board. I'm not really ready to speak, but we've worked very hard on this, a lot of time. We want to make sure we should go forward this project, that the community is well-informed, we have a safe place, and it's ADA compliant. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us. We're trying to, we have a committee I formed to try to find a place to move the library to when we close, if we have to close the Harrison Memorial Library down. We might not be able to find a place. So there's a lot of different things that are coming to play. We may have to go to a phased remodel and try to keep the library going. I do not want to move the Harrison Memorial Library to the children's library because that is doing fantastic. We've had 80 kids last Wednesday for program. And I don't want to do anything to stop that. And so we have a lot of challenges. I've been put in a position that I don't, that I'm very hard trying to say what I want to say, but I care about the library. I spent a lot of hours trying to care about this library. And the project, something has to be done. I talked to Sue MacLeod today, and she said, I want to go, be able to go and not have a hard time getting around. So, I hope that we can make this project work, but I want the community to be involved. And any questions you people want to ask me, but I'm trying very hard, and that's all I can say.
John, you're doing a good job, I appreciate it. You're doing a very good job, thank you.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Fallon, and I'm the executive director for the Carmel Public Library Foundation. And as most of us are aware, some who may not be aware, the foundation is in a public-private partnership with the city. We work very closely with the Library Board of Trustees and the Library Director to ensure operational requirements are met, and we're able to continue to provide this wonderful, incredible resource for the community. So I would just like to say on behalf of the Carmel Public Library Foundation, whose mission is to keep our library open, relevant, and thriving, we are very excited to do everything that we can and through our full support behind this project because we want this library here for the next 100 years. this library here for the next 100 years. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it.
Alexandra, would you just, for the audience's benefit, tell them what the foundation actually provides? Because it's very impressive.
Yes, in the, in our public-private partnership with the city, the Carmel Public Library Foundation helps to raise funds for all of the operational aspects of the library, which includes all the books, DVDs, programs, equipment, and services. And as someone who has raised a few of the Thomas Register books back before the internet and raised my three boys in the Park Branch, I can tell you that I'm a direct recipient of all the incredible, wonderful benefits the library has provide, provided to the community over the years.
Thank you. I'm not sure everyone in the community knows how far your support goes. So it's important for us to know that at the beginning of a project.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Is there anybody else wishing to speak today? Okay, I assume nobody else is wishing to speak. Get back to council for take action. Councilmembers?
Yeah, I'll go first since I already started. So thank you, thank you, Alexandra, for all of the, you're back there somewhere, for everything that you do. I think, you know, I've said this to you before, I think that the, the library is a valuable part. The library, CPLF, is a valuable part of the community. And I think that Karen spoke correctly when she said everybody's looking forward to the project. And I do think that there's a, a good project here. And I think we need to maybe refine where we are a little bit and try and figure out how to make it a little better. So I have, I have some comments on the thing. First, you know, Ashley spoke about the two public, public here, public meetings that we had, you know, one which was canceled because nobody showed up, and then one which had seven people. And, you know, if experience on the police station has taught us anything, it's that when people find out, they start showing up. And so I don't think that, community-wise, where, you know, it doesn't strike me that we have quite enough public awareness yet to, to move forward. But I think if we, if we make these sort of changes that I and presumably other council members are going to talk about, I think that we'll get, I think that through that process of changing the RFP, we'll, hopefully we'll get there. My first comment is, I don't really understand who, who's gonna, you know, who's gonna pay for the project. You know, there's not very much, there's not very much money in the CIP. There's certainly not enough money in the CIP to pay for even a small part of this project right now. And so I don't understand what the relationship is between, you know, the purse strings of the CPLF and, and the city. You know, once the city hires, uh, once the city hires an architect, you know, sends this RFP out, hold on one second. Yeah, once the city hands out, yeah, once the city, uh, once the city sends out an RFP and hires someone, you know, the city is sort of on the hook for the other half of the contract. And I don't, I don't understand really, you know, I would like to see sort of something in writing, you know, some agreement between the CPLF and the city. And I would like that to be ironed out as part of this sort of RFP process as we get to the point of issuing this RFP, so that we, you know, the five of us have an understanding of what happened, you know, what contingency plans are if things go south, you know, how much it's going to cost. And, you know, for example, you know, this RFP, you know, I know the CPLF is going to undertake a significant fundraising effort to, to raise this money. But the, the city's going to have to start forking out the money at the beginning, you know, when, when the, okay, when, when the, you know, when the sort of process starts. So I don't, I don't understand, is the city's name on the RFP? So I don't really understand how that, I would like to see something in writing, how that's going to work. And so would you, you have some comments or?
So the, the intention here with this RFP is, both of those things, those have, both of those things have been discussed, both in agreement with the Carmel Public Library Foundation between the city, so that there is an understanding of the funding and who is doing what. So this is a facility, city facility, the contracts need to run through the city, therefore with liability and all of that. With this first, with this architect, with this RFP, this would be paid for by the Carmel Public Library Foundation. They have been actively, quietly working to, to raise funds, knowing that this is going to be a big project.
Okay, so I would like to see, you know, before we send out this RFP with however it turns out, I would like to see, you know, the agreement between the CPLF and the city. I would like the council to see it, so that we, you know, so that we, you know, our job is sort of to protect the city in addition to improving the library. So I would be interested in seeing that agreement and having our fingerprints on it to make sure that it's okay, since it's the city's creditworthiness that's going to go, that's going to go into that. The second thing was, I talked about, a few minutes ago, about the sort of no library experience and the way, the no library experience on the list of sort of things that you're going to judge the, the architects by. And that's okay. You know, you spoke about, you spoke about a lot of things that have to do with the, the physical building, you know, the ADA access and, you know, the sewer and the foundation. And obviously, a, a, you know, a physical architect has a better understanding than maybe Jason Architects does, you know, if they're a library architect. So I get that there are two, I get that there's sort of two players here that are doing that. And we have, as I mentioned before, we have the same thing with the police station project, right? We have, we have Indigo, and then we have Shikatans, who Indigo hired, that's going to do sort of the outside of the building, you know. I'm going to say the, the outside architecture sort of building, at least that's where it is now. And as opposed to the police station part, the policing part of the police station building. And so I would like to have a better understanding through this RFP, like, who's going to do the library part of this project? Like, the library-based product, part of this project? Is that going to be, you know, we've hired Jason Architects, and I don't know whether the role, whether it's foreseen that they will continue, you know, they're library experts. So I don't know whether Jason would continue to perform that function, you know, if we hired, and I'm just going to use this as, as an example, if we hired IMPAID to do the interior work of the, of the library, who, you know, who's going to be working for whom? Like, I don't particularly care, like, it doesn't really matter, you know, in this case, whether we, you know, who does, you know, the, the physical requirements for the library are so enormous, that it doesn't really matter to me that one works for the other, or the other works for the one. But I would like the RFP, I would be interested in having the RFP sort of specify how that relationship is going to work. And it can be a part of, it can be a part of the proposals that you get from the various architects. They can say, we're going to work with Jason, or we're going to work with someone else, or we have library experience in-house. But I think the, the RFP, I think that the proposals that we get for the library should talk about how they're going to satisfy the part of the process that you talked about, which is the functionality of the library. Like, if we're going to start running, if we're going to start loaning out KitchenAid mixers, then the library, you know, the, the IMPAID is not going to be able to deal with that, but maybe Jason Architects can do it. Like, someone needs to lead that part of the discussion. And I think that that should be part of this RFP process. And we should know when we're going to do that. So that's an addition that I would make to sort of the evaluation criteria.
Jeff, can I ask you a question on that, on that same note?
Sure.
Would, would something like, if there was a byline or a line item for money to be spent on a professional with the architect in the proposal?
I don't really, like, I don't, I think, like, I don't really care, like, how it gets worked out. Like, I don't, like, I would leave that, again, I would leave that to IMPAID or to the, to bidders. And I would, and I would, you know, and I would leave that, you know, to staff. You know, you have a functional architect that you are apparently very happy with. And so if, if staff wants to decide, you know, I'm looking at you, Brandon, if staff wants to decide that working with Jason is a part of that project, if Jason is the architect that we're going to use to slot in to do that community conversation part, since we've been using them all along, then I think the RFP should say that. And then the RFP should say, you know, is Jason going to be paid by the city, or is Jason going to be paid by IMPAID, or whoever it is, whoever it is. Like, I would like to have an understanding of sort of how that relationship, how that relationship is going to work. And then on the evaluation committee, like, usually when we evaluate, usually when we evaluate proposals, it's all done by staff. Like, when we evaluated the police station, when we evaluated the police station proposals, you know, staff, staff brought us a list of the two or three proposals, however many was, and they were ranked. And I'm comfortable with that. Like, I'm comfortable with having you and Brandon, you and Brandon, you know, and some, some subset of staff doing that. But if, if, if the list expands to something beyond staff, like, whether it's library board members or community members, like it's talked about, like, I want to see the list. I want to see the list of who's on the evaluation committee. So I want to have my, I would prefer that my fingerprints be on the approval of that list. And one thing that, one thing that I noticed that wasn't on that list are architects. And if we're going to hire, you know, if we're going to hire IMPAID, you know, IMPAID to do, you know, to do the interior of this building or the exterior of this building, you know, to the extent that we can, or however it is that that's going to work, then I would like to have at least one, if not two, architects that are capable of judging, you know, the architectural capability of the people that are going to be doing this work. Like, I am not capable of doing this. And, and you and Brandon are really not capable of, of judging, you know, architectural work like that to a building that's this important. So, so I would like to see, you know, when you come back to, when you come back to us with that list, I would like to see an architect or two architects on that list. You know, and hopefully this would be architects that are not bidding on the project. Like, you know, you know, if, if a local firm wants to bid on the project, then, then I would assume that they're not going to be on that list. But, you know, we have lots of architects in the community that, you know, we have a, we've heard from lots of architects before about, you know, local involvement, whatever. And if we're not going to, you know, this is a good way to get the local architecture community involved, you know, the AIA or whoever it is. The AIA would be a great resource to use, to use for, for that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, Jeff, a lot of comments there.
It's a complicated project.
I know that. I've been on it. I was part of the selection committee when we started this out a while ago. I think it's an important project. I think that the points you made are good, but I'd hate to see this drag on for too much longer. We can go get the RFP put together, get it out there. So what are the thoughts here? Bobby?
I would agree, Mayor. I appreciate Jeff. I appreciate all the thought that went into it. However, it's, it does something, it seems like something that will flush itself out after they bring us a proposal. So I'm more inclined to get the, get the ball rolling and not have them come back, because that would be a lot of work. I don't know. Ashley, do you have any idea of what kind of work that would put on you?
If I may, if I may, you know, take the liberty that you took with me a few minutes ago. And what I would say is that this is a project that's going to take years to do. And what I'm asking for, you know, I think the crux of what I'm asking for, I think that these things are, they both protect the city in terms of the money, you know, in terms of who pays, who's paying for all this, you know, since we have no money allocated in the budget. And they are essential for good project management. And good project management starts by having a good RFP. And I think the things that I've suggested, especially, you know, especially the understanding of how the architects work with one another, and how the, that we have an architect, who's on this evaluation committee, which I would like to see, and how the architect, you know, what architects are on the evaluation committee. Like, I think that those are things that, you know, I understand that they take a couple months here, you know, in the front, to do these things. But this is a project that's going to go on for, for five years. And I think that that sort of thing, which we did with the police station project, you know, is, is very much time well spent at this point, at this point. Like, getting off to a good start with a project like this, I think is really important.
Thank you.
So thank you, thank you for letting us.
No, I appreciate that. And I still, I appreciate the idea of, of where the money is coming from and how much and that sort of thing. But the other stuff, I just think that it might, it might delay moving the project forward. So.
Well, I agree with Bobby. I think, I think one of the things I'd like to see is, I'd like to see us get going on the selection process. So Jeff, what are you saying? I mean, you want to have the, the actual qualifications for the person we're looking for, the firm we're looking for, right? Spelled out in the RFP, right?
I would like to understand, as I said, as I said, I would like to understand, like, who's going to do the library stuff. Like, that's the thing I think that's missing from the RFP. Like, who's going to do the library stuff? The stuff related to sort of gauging the community, you know, what the community thinks a library, what the community thinks a library is. So I would like to understand that, that and who's going to pay for it. And I would like, you know, I'd like to understand that before we, before we send off an RFP. And I would, and again, with the evaluation committee, same thing. You know, what architects are on it and who's on it.
I think those are valuable considerations, because there's nothing worse than having a project start with misunderstands and assumptions. So if those can be spelled out, some of those concerns about who's paying for it, and who's going to do the library work, because it is two projects, really. It's, it's the physical project of the preservation and the renovation of the building. And it's also the project of how our library is going to function and serve the people within it. And those have to be in concert for this to be a good project. We could design the most beautiful library in the world, and people would go in and say, oh, my God, why did you choose those colors? How can I be here? I can't relax. So the more that we can, maybe even just a month or so, have some time to ferret out some of those concerns, because when you think about it, as I said just a second ago, it's, it's two very distinct and important parts of how this all goes together to come out to being a fabulous project in the end. One that preserves the building, but also that the community enjoys using and being in and supports. So I can see slowing down just a touch.
I think there's such thing as a paralysis of analysis here.
Right.
That worries me to some extent, that we're going to analyze this thing indefinitely.
Yeah.
I think we could go ahead. And I mean, if we want to take a month, okay, that's the maximum I could possibly go. I do think we could get going here.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I do think it is important that we spell out in writing who's going to be responsible financially. That, that's definitely clear. But I do agree with you that we might be over-analyzing this a bit, and it's going to delay it. So if we have a way of tightening that in, I think I would support that.
Ashley, what do you think time-wise? What can we do here? Get this thing going?
So, thank you all very much for your feedback. I appreciate it. Because this will help make this a great project. I think that I can do, I can work with the Carmel Public Library Foundation and our city attorney to start a conversation about drafting an agreement as soon as we possibly can. And hopefully, that process won't take too long, so that we can get something on, I'm not sure if it would be open session or closed session, but something in front of the council, I would say optimistically, for the August meeting, but that's quick. If not, that, September. But I can be back as soon as next month with the updates to the requests for proposals and the proposed evaluators for the proposals when they come back in August, to keep us moving, clipping along, if that's amenable to council. So updates and the evaluators in August, so a report out then. And then with the goal of having an agreement for council to look at regarding the funding, also at the August meeting, but that may take a little bit longer, because we're talking about a legal agreement. So that in September, so that we can keep both things moving along. Does that, is that amenable to everybody?
Yeah, speaking for the comment about the legal agreement, we'll, we'll have that ready for August. So we'll get it done, and we'll get it to the people that need to review it. And I'll commit to that.
This is an agreement between the city and the CPLF for the funding.
For consideration, yes. That sounds fine. I support that.
Okay, so I made a motion then to continue this with the direction to staff to go ahead and do, as was discussed, we'll go ahead and get the RFP further defined, go ahead and figure out what the definition of the actual allocation of money is going to be the cost associated. We'll also go ahead and determine the professionalism of the organization that we hire. What's a really good experience in the library world, right, Jeff?
And the, and the evaluation committee.
Give me a second.
Give me a second. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And Jeff, you'll be available to work with staff on this, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramov?
Yes.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Forgot what to say.
All right, let's move on then to our last item of business for tonight, which is to go ahead and provide Resolution 20 dash, 20, 24 dash 062, requiring staff to begin working immediately on the development of alternative sites and programs that would allow for an amendment to the city's adopted six-cycle housing element to remove Vista Lobos and Sunset Center from the lots in the Victoria list. Brendan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Here to discuss the item that the mayor just announced. So a little bit of background here before we get too far into it. As you know, on April 8th, the city council adopted their six-cycle housing element. Not only did that prevent us from experiencing the builder's remedy and other punitive measures, during those discussions, there was concerns raised regarding the potential for housing being built on the city-owned parking lot sets, the Sunset Center, North and South Lot and Vista Lobos. Those concerns were not only about utilizing, you know, city-owned public lands for housing, but also some concerns with concentration of housing and the scale the buildings needed to accommodate that. So we came back to you in May to discuss moving forward after we got the housing element in place, which is very important, discuss ways moving forward in finding alternative sites, and direction was given to return with periodic updates on progress. The next one coming up is programmed for September. So there is, has been continued community interest following that May 7th meeting in finding viable alternative sites. And I underline that word viable, we talked about it a lot during the housing element. That means sites realistically can produce affordable housing. So there's a lot of interest in finding those viable sites, new and different viable sites that were not included in the housing element. That could allow for our existing housing element to be amended, to remove those city-owned sites. What that means is we would have to come up with 149 affordable housing units somewhere else. So those two city sites make up 149 of the affordable units that we, we have to come up with in our housing element. As you know, they introduced themselves at a previous meeting, there is a resident group that's been assembled, many of whom are here tonight, it was nice to see them, called the Affordable Housing Alternatives, or the AHA Group. And so what I have for you tonight is a draft resolution for you to consider, provide edits on, feedback, that would formalize council direction. You know, we've talked already a lot about capacity tonight, that would formalize council's direction to allocate staff time over the coming months to a very specific effort. That would be really with two, in my, in my words here, two major goals. One is to keep the same level of opportunity for development of affordable housing sites. That's 231 total affordable housing units that our housing element requires us to plan for. That number would not change. The other goal, though, is to replace those city-owned sites in the housing element with an alternate 149 sites. How that's accomplished, so that would, we were asking, the resolution would be giving direction to staff to explore and develop viable, and you're going to see that word again, viable alternatives to where the 149 units could be produced. And again, those are affordable units, meaning that they're deed restricted at some level to, to income. That could be accomplished through identifying new sites that didn't come to us during the, the year and a half, two years that we're working on. You know, maybe property owners are in a different place now downtown, where they're willing to give us a letter that says, yes, I'm very interested in deed restricting a couple of my units in the future. You know, maybe, maybe we missed something, finding new sites that just weren't explored far enough, maybe, in the first round of the housing element. This also could come from new or refined programs, meaning that we could look at programs, if there's a way in our housing element that says, you know, we have this program, and we estimate it'll create this many affordable units, is there a way to enhance or refine that program so that maybe it generates more? All of these things, again, would require some level of proof, because at the end of the day, we have to go back to the state and say, we found 149 new affordable opportunities somewhere else in the city. So we have to prove our work, we have to show our work, like I say to the planners all the time. And then other, you know, if there's something else that comes up, this is meant to be, you know, a real exploratory process. We've talked a lot about ADUs already. We know that our ADU number is low in the housing element, and that was based on many factors, but we are very confident that we could provide more information about how many ADUs we expect to produce over the next seven or eight years. So that's, that's one of the, the main thing that the, the resolution in front of you would do. There's a couple of recitals in there that I want to just call out. One of the main things we want to not lose sight of is that we, we do not want to lose state certification of our housing element. The biggest reason for that is, we don't want to be subject to the builder's remedy. It's, it's important to note that, and I will say that, you know, we, we don't have a guarantee that if we submit, submit an amendment, but we, through correspondences from the, the local group that I mentioned, they, through a professional attorney, land use attorney, housing attorney that they hired, have reported that they, that their attorney had a conversation with a high, high official at HCD, who said, when you submit an amendment, it doesn't decertify your housing element. We don't have anything in writing from HCD, but that gives me a, a pretty good level of comfort. You know, if, if we were directed to go and work over the next three months to explore alternatives, that would be something I would want to do as part of that exploration, is to get something more concrete from HCD, because as you remember, when you submit your housing element to the state on their website, your status changes from in compliance to in review. So we just want to make sure that we don't trip any wires there, but we're all on the same page there, that's a very important thing to all of us. The other important thing that's in the resolution is to move quickly. We recognize there are other things coming down the road in the schedule for the housing element, like the plan to launch an RFP for the Sunset Center lots in December of 2025. So if we are going to make changes, we need to do them quickly, so that, so that we can plan and, and sort of reshuffle how we're approaching this. And then, of course, you know, our, our resolution, there's a, there's some language in there about involving the community, that's going to be a big part of anything we do. Aside from the required, just like when we did the first time adopting our housing element, there are required days of public input on an amendment, those would still be required through an amendment. We, of course, would want to involve our community, because we heard from a lot of them that they, they want us to pursue this opportunity. So if you direct staff to, to go this direction through some version of the resolution that's in front of you, we would begin work and then return to council in September for an update on our progress. I mentioned that's the pre-programmed time for us to come back to you. And then right now, the resolution says in October of 2024, to come back with a rough draft presented to council. And I want to take a minute to clarify that, because rough draft means different things to different people. So the intention with the resolution and the term rough draft was, a rough draft means very detailed, but it could be in bullet format, but those, those bullets have a lot of meat on them. They talk about what the reality is of possibilities, could be short outline paragraphs, includes proof, like I mentioned, showing that work, proof of those vetted sites and programs and why they are viable, put that word up there again intentionally. This could include letters from property owners, revised calculations, seeing what other jurisdictions have done, other things like that. I also do believe that it's important during this period to, to have some sort of connection with HCD and get confirmation that we wouldn't be running the risk of decertification. So then we would, we would come back with that rough draft as a tool to explain to council the reality and the possibility of HCD approving an amendment. We, we, that would be gathering all that information. What a rough draft is not, what it does not mean in this context, is a fully reformatted housing element, all 500 pages redone at that time in October. It wouldn't be ready to submit to the state the very next day. We may not have all the maps and tables and charts and analysis done that we would need in order to send it back to the state, because they have requirements about what has to be done. And we may not even have all the community engagement completed, because I remember, as I said, we have to do public, public review periods, and we'd want to make sure we got a lot of community input on that. So I just wanted to draw a line between what rough draft in the context of this, of this resolution means. It means coming back with something very meaty, that we can have real conversations about numbers, but it doesn't mean that we turn around the next day and we send the amendment to the state. So with that, this is the direction staff is looking for tonight. We're asking you to consider, one, directing us to move forward and working on and exploring those alternatives, and then, two, the timing part of it is coming back to you in September with an update, and then October with that rough draft. And with that, I will end my presentation, but I am available for questions.
Thank you, Brendan. Any questions to counter, Bobby, Brendan?
Could, could we put a time on there that the rough draft gets finished and have it talked about at the December meeting?
That's, that's totally up to you. It's, it's your resolution, I drafted it for you, it's, it's your words to staff, so if the majority of the council says we want it to come back to us in December, then that's fine.
Thanks, Brendan.
Did you say September or December?
December.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to Brendan?
Yeah. Do you have an understanding of what the process, you know, we went through this process for 18 months to get the first one, to get the first housing element certified. Do you, do you have an understanding of what the process is to make this change? Like what, like you talked about, you talked about not having the community engagement done, like maybe coming back in October, but not having the community engagement done with, you know, coming back to the list of programs, but a list of programs that isn't vetted by the community? Is that, is that what you're talking about? Is that what you mean?
If, if that's what I said, I didn't mean that. What I, what I meant to say was, we won't have all the community engagement done. I, I would anticipate in that three to four months, we would, we would have engagement with the community, but there are certain points of required community engagement, like
Thirty days.
Once you have a draft, exactly, yes. And we may, we may, coming back to you with, with that draft, we may get direction from you that we then want to go back to the community and vet again. So I can't say that all the community engagement went done, but we would not show up in October with no community engagement.
Okay, so the stage, I think you're answering my question. So the state requirement for community engagement, like HCD says, you have to engage a community when you develop a housing element. That engagement, the, the HCD's requirement is in those 30-day periods, like that's, is there, is there other missing stuff at the beginning, or can you just go into room and then bring it out and do the 30 days of community engagement?
Yeah, you, you can
And that will satisfy the state?
You don't, there's no, if your question is, are there any additional things, because it's an amendment versus the original, no, there's no, we, we actually have less, I believe, the, the circulation periods are actually less for an amendment with the public, but there still are requirements for public circulation and public involvement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to Brendan? Bobby?
Hi, Br- uh, Brendan, hi, Brandon. I think, I think I know the answer to this, just for, but for public awareness. Has there been any success with any cities asking for an amendment and, and getting an amendment?
You know, I, I, I've asked some other housing element attorneys, I haven't talked to any who've said they've done it, but I could be wrong, I haven't talked to everybody in the world, so I, I don't want to say for certain. It's not the most common thing to do, but it's not, there's a process for it, which means that it is possible.
I think maybe somebody that speaks tonight may have that answer.
Yeah.
Do you, so, as a follow-up to Bobby's question, do you think it's worth it for you to call HCD, like first thing, like tomorrow morning, if we decide to move forward and call HCD and ask them? Like, you know, I think where Bobby's going to ask them if this is, like what they're going to say when we, like if, what they're going to say when we, you know, when, like I don't particularly want you to show up at HCD's door, you know, six or eight or 10 weeks from now and say, here's our amendment, you know, to our housing element. Do you think that there's a, you think it'll be worthwhile for you to, like, at least have a preliminary call with them? And I know that you spoke about some of the, you know, some of the members of the AHA Group, you know, relaying some sort of second or third-hand experience with that, but do you think that would be a valuable thing for you to do?
I think it'd be very valuable. I think it would be, I don't know if I'd do it tomorrow, I'd probably want to take a couple of weeks and, you know, coalesce some of the, the early ideas into some talking points, so that when I called HCD, it wouldn't be like, hey, we got this idea to amend our housing element, we don't have any idea of how we're going to do it. So I'd want to have a little more ammunition when I spoke with them, but I do think two weeks rather than nine weeks would be a good idea.
Thank you.
I've got two questions, Brandon. When you're talking to HCD, could you also find out roughly a timetable of when they're reviewing an amendment? What is that, like a four-week process or a two, three-month process, like how long that would take? And then if, I'm guessing there might be a back and forth, where they may say, this, we like these parts of it, but this part is not okay, so then, then there's that back and forth. And then my follow-up question to that is, there was concern the last time around, it seems where we lost the openness and some of the transparency is with staff communicating with HCD, so is there any way that we can open that up more? Because that's where the public and everyone in council as well gets left out of the process.
So the first question, find out how long HCD's review would be, we had, we had, I feel like we had success in the first round of having these iterative conversations that aren't programmed. So I think we would, we would definitely have those, and the rest of the, like the actual timelines when you release for public review, that is programmed. So we can come back to you with, you know, a timeline laid out, but when, when I do have a conversation with them, I can get a good sense for, you know, how many they're processing right now. I don't know, or, or what they're working on. I don't know if the team that reviewed our housing element has now moved on to another region, because remember, they're all sequential, like year by year throughout the state.
Right.
So I don't know what their timeline is. So yes, that's a good question, and we can find that out. I, I will say, I mean, I'm not, I'm a little hesitant to say, yes, we're going to open conversations with, you know, staff conversations between city staff and HCD staff, talking about logistics of the housing element to a broad community, because then how do you decide who's in that meeting? I mean, you have 40 people from the community in that meeting, it's
Well, I
But I'm happy to offer, you know, every time we have a conversation with the state to report out what happened.
I'd be comfortable if we had three or four people from the AHA Group, because they're the experts, they've been spending so much time researching this and really getting the ins and outs. I would feel comfortable if they were part of those conversations, and then, you know, you could report back to the council as a whole and the public as a whole at, at the next upcoming council meeting after some kind of thing like that. I think that would really help, because a lot of people felt that's where this process went off the rails a bit, is when we started focusing on these, these three city lots as the solution, and frankly, the community doesn't really seem to want that. And so I don't want to get us into that kind of a situation. So I would feel more comfortable if we did have representatives of the AHA Group with those calls.
I'll, I'll leave that to the council. I mean, my, my recommendation, you asked me, just as a, you know, a planning director, I, I would worry about the selection process for who gets to be on that call. It's a clear line when it's city staff and HCD staff, but my recommenda-, or my suggestion would be, it's going to be difficult to decide who, who are those people, how big is that number? If there's people that aren't part of the AHA Group, they don't have a chance to have a conversation with HCD. That would be my only fear. So it's just something for you guys to consider.
All right, thank you.
Any questions to Brendan?
Yes, I think the term viable is so important, so thank you for emphasizing it. Do you, can you answer, things that were put up in the past, in the fourth cycle and the fifth cycle and so on, that never came to fruition? Does HCD determine that after they've been put up so many times and nothing happened, that they are no longer viable? That they just are not going to happen? Do they lessen their, their percentage of viability because they've been put up more than once, twice, three times?
Those are conversations that we've had with HCD, and they do look at those sites that are repeated differently, where, where you can sort of change their mind on those is if you change, you know, like the incentives or programs, so that, that maybe presents some lens on those sites that you've used before that maybe someone didn't look at before. So it's sort of a two-sided answer. If you do nothing at all, then yeah, they, they look at those like, well, they didn't do anything before, why would they do anything now? But if you, if you offer some new programs or incentives, like, you know, we did this time around, then they might say, okay, well, now those might become viable, because you've done something different in your housing element. That's why housing elements have programs in them too, is to try to create those incentives for sites to be viable.
Okay, and I would just like to say that some of those decisions that had to be made at the 11th hour, literally, because we were facing needing to certify so that we could avoid builder's remedy, were almost bargaining sessions in a way, because you had to present what you thought was going to work, and then you would get a, no, it's not going to, or yes, if you tweak this, if you tweak that. Some of those things, I, it's just not possible to do in a completely open forum, because they are sort of negotiations. Would you agree?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know if I agree or disagree with that. You know, I, I think I'll just leave that one there for the council, to be honest. You know, I gave my opinion on that and, yeah.
Okay, because when we have sites that were put in there and then sites, you know, were removed or put in or put back in and so on and so forth, we had to choose some of the most viable sites. And the most viable sites were the ones in the city's control. Where when we put up sites that are totally dependent on private people stepping up with their properties, it's, it's a little stickier, because the commitment has to be there for them to be viable sites, correct?
We have to, what that commitment is, is really ultimately up to HCD. It's been, it's been different in different jurisdictions around the state, because every jurisdictional area, like our Amberg region, has a different person and group reviewing that. So, and it also is based on your history of production in a city. So us, we as a city haven't produced a lot of affordable housing in the past. And so our burden of proof of something gonna be built in the, in the future is higher versus other cities where they have a history of building affordable housing. They maybe don't need a letter from a property owner. They just, you know, need some people to show it up to an interest meeting and put their name on the list. So it's hard to say. We, we have to have that conversation. But I think that that's, that's one of the things that would need to be focused on. We would work on the hardest in that three to four month period, is coming up with that evidence and that proof that we feel would justify an amendment to the housing element.
And could you answer the question? How much affordable housing did we come up with in the fifth cycle?
Uh, zero.
Zero?
Yeah, it was all market rate housing that was built.
So we produced no affordable housing in the fifth cycle?
No deed restricted affordable housing, that's right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bobby, you have another question?
Well, I just wanted to say, however, had the ADUs been recorded in that fifth cycle, they would have been recorded as.
That's right. That's why I said, no, we reproduced no deed restricted affordable housing. But that, the ADU thing is new. The state didn't allow that in the fifth cycle.
And the ADUs are not deed restricted?
Right.
But the one hundred and forty-nine units are going to be required to be deed restricted?
Well, the hundred and forty-nine, no, the hundred and forty-nine units can be made up of ADUs as well. That's just, ADUs will count towards our affordable units. If it's a hundred and forty-nine ADUs. It's just, yeah, they still count as affordable. Yeah, they don't have to be, but in order for any other type of housing unit to count as affordable, it has to be deed restricted.
Okay, but let's just make clear about this. The ADUs are, the state is assuming thirty percent very low, thirty percent low, thirty percent moderate, and thirty, uh, ten percent market rate?
That's correct.
Okay, so it wouldn't just be a hundred and forty-nine ADUs, because it'd be parceled out in the thirty, 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 ten? Okay, all right. I think the clearer we can be about definitions.
Thank you.
And what is required, the better, so that we don't have that misunderstood.
All right, unless there's any other questions, we'll open up the public. Not a problem for any member of the public to speak, please come forward.
Two people on phones in that picture.
Good evening. My name's Hans Buder, and I come before you tonight as a spokesperson for AHA, which is the citizens' group that's been spearheading this effort. To be clear, we are not anti-housing. We are a diverse group united by a common goal, to accommodate this new housing in a way that's tailored to Carmel and that retains as much local control as possible. I want to begin by thanking the council for the work you did to get our housing element certified by the deadline. Unfortunately, tight time constraints prevented us from fully exploring all of our options, as, as Brandon alluded to. You know, the good news is that you bought us more time, and we now have an opportunity to craft a plan that's better tailored to our village. So rather than allowing HCD to fast-track our scarce public lands for housing development, let's put in the extra effort to identify privately held sites for these units. Rather than create a hundred percent income restricted developments, let's pursue a mixed income approach that more intentionally integrates folks into our community. And rather than building developments that span entire city blocks, let's put together a plan that creatively meets our arena and that, that preserves our local character. And, you know, all of this is gonna take work, but it's not gonna create an excessive burden on the staff. And there's two reasons for that. First, because you created a, a new city planner position devoted to the implementation of the housing element. And second, because our AHA group is gonna continue to serve as a force multiplier for the staff. And we already have some really tangible, hopeful progress to share. First and foremost, through our consultant, we've been able to definitively confirm with HCD that pursuing an amendment to the housing element will not put us at risk of decertification. And I say that, and I'm gonna break the anonymity that I was trying to maintain here, but our consultant spoke to, in person, the lead plan reviewer at HCD who reviewed our housing element. Even more importantly, we've made substantial progress in vetting a menu of alternative strategies, viable alternative strategies. We have four to five strategies relating to ADU, which are really high probability. Our consultant has strongly emphasized the viability of church sites, and we have a couple of very intriguing leads on that front. We're also working on an exciting hotel to residential redevelopment program that's based on a program in Newport Beach's housing element that HCD has already signed off on. The list goes on. The upshot is that we're confident we can do this, but we have to act now. We've committed to issuing an RFP in December of 2025, so we need to draft this amendment quickly, ideally before staff would have to start the prep work on the RFP. So in conclusion, we urge you to pass this resolution. This is a good faith, solutions-oriented effort, and it has the support of the overwhelming majority of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Next speaker.
I'm just gonna take a couple of seconds, because Hans ran, ran out of time, and to thank especially our mayor and vice mayor and the staff for putting together that very tough-to-schedule twenty-person meeting, so that we could hash this through and come up with a really lovely resolution that perfectly captures and responds to the public interest as we understand it. So we just wanna, it's, it's a testimony to democracy in action, and we really do appreciate it, and we're grateful for that. We also, in that meeting, pledged that we would try to make this quick for you, so you all can spend your time deliberating. So I thought I'd just take a moment to ask the folks who are assembled here today, of course, everyone has the right to speak, but if they agree with what's been said so far, if they agree with the resolution as it's presented, if they wouldn't mind just standing up at the moment. Okay, hopefully that saves you some three minutes.
Not everybody.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Beth Bowman. I'm the executive director at the Sunset Cultural Center. On behalf of the Sunset Center Board of Trustees, clients, and tenants, I'm here to express gratitude to the volunteer AHA group, city council members, and city staff for working together to find alternative sites to satisfy the state's affordable housing requirements for Carmel by the Sea. Preserving the community and cultural zoning, given the historic Sunset Center site, is important to this vibrant community. Thank you for your consideration of the resolution.
Thank you, Beth.
Well, good evening. Ken White, CRA representative. The topic you were talking about tonight has been in front of our CRA board three or four years and is probably at the top of our discussion list. And I want you to know, the CRA board had a long discussion about the issue. It's in the consent agenda, or the agenda, and unanimously supports the proposition that's before you.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Anybody in Zoom?
Yeah, Dr. Noakes, go ahead.
Hi.
How you doing? Floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Just to demonstrate support for this resolution, I put out a recent petition and closely related to it, and a hundred signatures were returned in forty-eight hours. So there's obvious support for the idea. I took the appeal down due to, due to software problems with MoveOn, but I did rewrite it on another site, and I'm just waiting for this evening's vote, but hoping delivery is unnecessary and encouraging a majority for replacement of the parking lots in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr., appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Michael McWalters.
Michael.
Thank you. Thank you, Nova. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
First of all, in January of twenty-five, we've got AB 413 taking effect, which is gonna eliminate over four hundred parking spaces in the downtown. And we need to think about what happens when those four hundred spots aren't available to our visitors and they start parking in the neighborhood. And since, since we're on scenic, I'm thinking that we might consider reconfiguring the traffic pattern in the rectangle, and maybe not the entire rectangle, but you've got one way on scenic going north to south. And my, my thought is, on, on Santa Lucia, when they come east, they, they come to San Antonio, that's a one-way street going north. And I understand this weekend it was really packed, and there were a lot of cars parked in the rectangle, and there was barely room for one car to move, move back and to move along there. So initially, it's worth considering, if San Antonio is gonna be one way going north, and then you've got Carmelo one way going south to Santa Lucia, and then Camino Real coming north one way. The impact of no, of four hundred less parking spaces can impact the neighborhoods. So we need to think about that. The other thought that I had, I had a neighbor, she's a friend of ours. She went to Forest Hill Park this weekend and did a video. And I was struck by how, how big it is and how, there was one person in the park on, on the Fourth of July weekend reading a book. And it's, it's my view, because, because as we just heard, we didn't build anything in the fifth cycle. If we took Forest Hill Park, and of course, this is open for conversation and discussion, everybody gets to weigh in. If it's me, and that park is just sitting there as open space, and yes, we have ten parks in the, in the, in the, in the village, of course, the biggest park isn't mentioned in the ten parks, that's the Carmel Beach. But if it's me, I'm gonna put out an RFP for affordable housing in that park. And what's interesting is that it's lower. The park itself is below the street level, so we could actually do three levels, three stories, maybe four stories, but for sure, we could do three stories. And I think we could probably fit, and of course, I'm not an architect, I'm not a builder, but that chunk of one forty-nine that is slated for the parking lots, we could have at least half of that done in the, in the Forest, Forest Hill Park, and we can call it the Forest Hill Apartments. And so that's, and, and, and the, the second, second point is, what's the place or the protocol or the procedure? When we have a thought like this, who do we send it to? And we need to show the state that we're serious about this. And if there's not, if there's, if the overwhelming majority of, of the residents are in favor of using Forest Hill Park to show the state that we're serious about affordable housing, then we should, we should get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is anybody else wishing to testify tonight? I don't see anybody, anybody in the room here? All right, thank you. Yep, so go ahead.
Um, so I did, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did hear a good question from Mr. McWalters. You know, if someone has an idea, how do they get it in? You know, send it in to us, send it in to city staff, and we will, we will field that. I mean, that's, if, if we are directed to move forward with this, we're gonna be in, in idea land, generating ideas again. So you can send it directly to me, you can send it to Marnie, actually through our city website, where we have our housing element currently, there's a portal for submitting ideas there. So we're happy to receive any ideas from anybody.
Thank you.
Could we also share the address of the AHA group? They have a general email account. If somebody from the group could mention Hans or Victoria, the email address for the AHA group? Or maybe we can, okay. Kristi, thank you.
Hi. The address is citiesitealternatives@gmail.com. So it's, it's singular site, citiesitealternatives@gmail.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brandon, thanks. So that, that's still up on our website, the idea page?
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can I just talk now?
Sure.
So I want to thank this group very much for coming forward and doing this. I think it's, it's a great plan. I like it. I hope they come up with some great ideas, and I hope that we can get some of these things amended. That would be incredible. I, I don't know what else to say, other than I, I fully support this, and I hope that we can vote on this at the December meeting.
I'm, I'm very supportive of this resolution. I'd like to, first of all, thank you to everyone who came out tonight and, and who stood up in support of this. That absolutely means a lot to this community. And I'm very grateful to the AHA group, the time, the effort, the energy, the research that they've been doing is wonderful. And I know some are worried that this is gonna fall on staff, but really, this AHA group is coming up with a lot of these ideas, as we saw in Hans's presentation. So it's more like they're gonna come up with these ideas, they're gonna vet them, they're gonna go through things, and then they're gonna present them to staff. So it's not like staff is starting from square one and will have to be doing this. So I just want to reassure people about that. I am very worried we cannot go down the path of doing the RFP with the lots. We've got to do this immediately. Once we start changing the zoning, for example, for Sunset Center, once we start doing the RFP, we've gone down a path of no return, and we will not be able to get out. That's why this is so imperative that we do this now, and we absolutely put in all our effort. Like I've been saying, I know Chip's not here tonight, but I always keep saying that two main things we need to focus on right now are the police station and this housing element. Everything else, frankly, really is taking a back burner. This is so important right now for our community. And also, this is a matter of local control. The residents, the citizens of this town are saying, this is where we want to do this housing. We want to do this housing, but we get to say where we're gonna do it and how it fits in the character of our community. And that's why this is so important, and I fully support it, and I hope we can pass it tonight. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, the only thing I'm uncomfortable with is I do not want to see our housing plan get decertified. I don't care who talked to who or when they talked to them. I want absolute confidence in the fact that we would not go naked, so to speak, for even a few weeks, because I think that could be very dangerous. We already see two builder's remedy projects in the county, and who knows how many more will come. So I'm all for you guys finding some other sites that are viable, that are determined to be viable. I do find it curious that many people who spoke in favor of the resolution also spoke in favor of more trees in our neighborhoods, and then how so many ADUs proliferating were taking space away from our trees on private property. So let's just be cognizant of the fact that, yes, the ADUs can fulfill a great deal of this affordable housing, but they also do take up space on our very small lots. So, you know, if we want a hundred and fifty of them in town, that, if that's what the city wants, then that's what they'll get. But that is a concern of mine, and, but definitely, I do not want to surrender our certified city sites until we have absolute assurance that the new sites produced are viable and will be approved.
Jeff?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Hans and Victoria, for sort of spearheading this effort. You know, as I said, when we approve the housing element, you know, I would also like to see, you know, the, the, the parking lots not be used and to have a more dispersed nature of more dispersed version of the affordable housing throughout the community. I think that is the way that affordable housing should be built, and I think that it suits this community. So I'm in favor of this. My, my concern, in addition to the one concern that Karen had, was the, the staff time. And I have heard, you know, Alessandra talked about. was the, the staff time, and I have heard, you know, Alessandra talked about, Alessandra talked about, it won't be a burden on staff. And I would like to hear, you know, two things on that. At first, I would like to hear Brandon tell me that September and October are not a burden on staff. And, you know, and I would like to understand, you know, we keep, you know, we keep pushing off the, the design guidelines, and that project is very quickly becoming stale. And eventually, it will get to the point where we can't, we can't pick it up and move it forward anymore. We talked about the ADU ordinance, you know, there's been a little bit of press about the ADUs going in around town and how we don't have any control over the ADUs, and those don't fit within the community. So I would hate to see us, you know, to sort of, to Karen's point about sacrificing the forest for the trees or the trees for the forest, I would hate to see us put so much effort into this that we lose sight of the ADU ordinance and the potential for damage, you know, the potential for damage that, that, the potential for permanent damage that that is going to cause. So I would like to hear you talk about these two dates, and maybe, and, you know, before you do that, Bobby, you were talking about a December date, and I'm just kind of trying to figure out what that is.
The December date would be to have something ready to turn in, to, to be voted on, and then turned into the state.
So that's an additional deadline, in addition to September and October?
Yeah, because we have a rough draft in October, right? It says here. And what I'm saying is have a, a draft that's ready to be voted on at the December meeting.
So I'm, I'm struggling, thank you. So I'm struggling a little bit with, you know, Brandon spoke a little bit, a little bit ago about, you know, the 30-minute, 30, sorry, 30-day required periods for public review, including our review. So I'm struggling with how to, I'm struggling with how to reconcile those 30-day periods with your December, with that, with that December date. And so, you know, it sort of leads to, you know, I was talking about this when, you know, project planning, when we were talking about the library project. You know, the date, I think, I think Bobby is right. You know, I think, I think Bobby's perspective of looking at it from the date that we get it to the, to the state, you know, the day that we, you know, are finished with this project, I think that's the right perspective. But I don't, I don't understand, I don't, I don't see how the September and October dates get us to that December date. So I'm struggling a little bit with, you know, what the deadline should be and, you know, whether we should adopt the September and October dates or whether we should adopt the December date and sort of work backwards and see if, see if everything falls in, you know, see, you know. So if we, you know, if we adopt Bobby's, Bobby's deadline of December, can we make, can we make that work? Like, I'm more focused on, I'm more focused on the end goal, not the September and October dates. Like, whatever you think is, whatever you think could work, like, we can work expeditiously. But I'd like us to be realistic about what, what that, what that is.
Should we come through a workshop, maybe a workshop in, in the mid-months or something?
Yeah, so I think, a lot of questions there. So at, at a high level, I don't, I don't think we're at a point where we could say definitively we'll come back in December with something that you guys could vote on. I feel, I feel pretty comfortable with the September, October dates, as they're written right now, and the way that I characterized, you know, a draft coming back. We're coming back, you know, that gives us time to work with the group to flesh out these things. Because as it sits right now, we have, you know, Hans put up some ideas, you know, staff has some ideas too, but none of them are really fleshed out enough yet to see if they'll really bear fruit. The one that I feel most comfortable about is ADUs, because we know, just from math and looking at building permits, that we're gonna produce more. So we can write something like that up pretty quickly. But as far as the rest of the programs, you know, there's some conversations about the hotel programs and refining those a little bit more, looking at the church sites, talking to some more downtown businesses. I, I think we're gonna need to come back to you in September and October with sort of like this suite of ideas and how, how realistic they seem. And that will be a time where we can tell you, here's how much work we need to do to create this final shiny draft. Because remember, when you, when you have a draft that goes to the state, you have to do all the maps and charts and figures that I mentioned earlier. There are requirements to go along with these things to sort of show your work. I think at our level, we can come back with pretty meaty stuff in September and October that, that is realistic, but we won't, we will not have had time to do all that. So to turn those around in two months, I think would be a bit of a push. I do think that, that we can have a conversation about what that date is when we come back in September, October, a more realistic date. I, I'm pretty certain it won't be December. So that's the first answer to that. I feel comfortable with September and October, as I, as I characterize them today, and to some large extent, how Hans characterized them in his presentation as well, that we're coming back with, with draft version that includes some meat in October. With respect to, you know, just staff impacts, if, if, it certainly is not a zero impact on staff to do this. It is going to take some work. We have a largely fine housing element. There, there is a portion, and what we're really going after here is the sites inventory and two specific sites. So it's a focused amendment, so that reduces the sort of, the push and pull on it. It was mentioned earlier, you did, council, adopt your budget in that created a housing-only planner, and so that is a person that will be dedicated to this. We need to recruit for that, but we, I think we can do that pretty quickly. As far as my time, I will still need to be involved. We are, as you know, in the midst of recruiting for a replacement for me in the Planning and Building Director. So since February, I've been doing, acting Planning and Building Director and Assistant City Administrator. So we're very close in having a new director set up, but that person will come in and have to, have to work with them as well on this. So it's gonna take some of my capacity. It's certainly gonna take capacity from the housing planner. But with respect to like an ADU ordinance, it's a different planner that's working on that, so the housing element won't impact that. You know, maybe minor, but really, it won't. So it's a kind of a long, rambly answer, but the short answer is I feel comfortable with September, October, as characterized. I don't think we're at a point now where we can say we're coming back in December with something that we can give you the opportunity to vote on.
I have a question. The objective design guidelines that we are also supposed to draft, correct?
Right.
I did want to make an announcement that the state budget did put some money back into that program, so we aren't cut in half. I think we're gonna get about 80%, is it? Of what we expected to pay for drafting of those objective design guidelines. But where do they fit in to this whole scheme? And that is a staff responsibility.
It's a great question, and that's, that's what I was alluding to when I said we have a largely good housing element. So the housing element includes a lot more than just a list of sites where houses will be built. It has all of these programs and things like that, including objective design standards. So with the housing element planner in place and getting grant money, we start working on a parallel track on implementing and setting up these programs. Objective design standards, writing some sort of policy to come back to this council with of when we get water, how we're gonna allocate that. Those are things that have to be done also, regardless of whether the city-owned sites come off. Those are programs that, while they impact the city sites, whether they're on or off, they have to be done regardless. So those, those tasks will have already started. And so we, we will be working on those things in parallel with this effort.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make the motion that we pass Resolution 2024-062, directing staff to begin working immediately on the development of alternative sites and programs that would allow for an amendment of the city's adopted six-cycle housing element to remove Vistalobos and Sunset Center from the sites inventory list.
I'll second it under comments. I'd just like to say, first of all, I appreciate the professionalism. Perhaps with Victoria, you've set sets for a few meetings where redundant testimony isn't always the most productive use of the public's time. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Also, I'd like to say that if you wanted a representative to go forward to HCD, I'd be happy to volunteer from the council. I think it helps if an elected official is there to go ahead and kind of add some earnestly to the whole proposal, so I'm happy to do that. I think that'd make a difference. So that noted, we got a motion, we had a second. Is there any other discussion?
I like your idea, Mr. Mayor, to be part of those conversations. Thank you for offering to do that.
Got a question?
I just, I have one consideration. I just want to make sure that the point is that the sites will not be removed until we have a viable alternative that is blessed by HCD. Because what we don't want is a builder's remedy project that's six or eight stories high downtown. I, no one wants that. So we need to protect what we have right now and move forward with, hopefully, alternatives.
Yeah, I don't think there's any disagreement with that statement. All right, Nova, could you fill her out?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Yes.
Councilmember Furleto?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Richard?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Much appreciated. Well done.
We're going into post-session, so just, no, we're... Yeah, I gotta, I gotta text everybody.
It's gonna take a while for it to clear.